I'm opening my candy up early.
It was my sun spring break, so it was perfect.
There you go.
Go anywhere?
Already.
Probably not, but we'll know your vote.
No, that made me mad. I'm already requesting this be.
You can, you can X out. You can X out of it.
How come?
Sorry, Tony.
First to X, Ron.
See that red?
Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call the Tuesday, March 29th, 2022 Committee of the Whole to Order. Would you please stand with me and join in for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, would you please take the role?
Will do, Chairman. Alderman Redpath?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Present.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Here.
Alderwoman Desensso?
Present.
Alderman McMiniman?
Here.
Alderwoman Connelly?
Present.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I would accept a motion for approval on the March 8th, 2022.
Self moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Check it.
Been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Treasurer?
Yes, Chair Gregory.
Would you please present your treasurer's report?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
The corporate fund in the month of February, Chair Gregory, had a beginning balance of forty-eight million, two hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars. We took in total receipts of ten million, four hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of February of ten million, one hundred thirteen thousand, twenty-four dollars, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of February of forty-eight million, five hundred fifty-eight thousand, thirty dollars. Of that balance, Chair Gregory, the ARPA funds at the end of February were fourteen million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven dollars. This concludes my report, Chair Gregory.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All righty. Are there any OBM report tonight, correct? Any presentations? I understand we have one?
We have one presentation.
All right. Is that Public Works? Correct. Come on up. Your name and I guess we don't need your address because you're probably not from here, but definitely the company you represent.
Thank you, Alderman. My name is Riley Potts. I work for Public Works and I'm the GIS program coordinator. Couple weeks ago, Nate asked me to, Director Bottom asked me to give a presentation to Icon and explain exactly what was City Works. And I kind of laughed and it's, he wanted me to put it in a few slides and explain it the best I could. So I had to think about it a little bit. And then I saw last week or two weeks ago, Jill came in and she talked at the end of the meeting and handed out some of my presentation. So I just wanted to give an update, fill you in on where we're at with things, where we're headed. So what is City Works? Also, I sat in on this probably five or six years ago. Some of you I recognize from that presentation, but a lot of people are new. So I'll just go over everything and I'll answer some questions if you haven't at the end. So do I have the slide clicker? What is City Works? City Works is a computerized maintenance, management, and permitting system. It's GIS-centric, meaning that every entry gets an XY in town somewhere. It's composed of two components. It has an AMS, Asset Management System, and that is city infrastructure. You have a problem, a pothole, guys go out and fix it. All that's done with AMS.
Thank you.
The PLL side is permits, land licenses. That is third floor building permits, complaints, private property complaints. It's all on the, it's a web browser program housed by ISD and Secured. So we come into the morning, sign in, and we're off to the races. So yeah, there's like thirteen servers this is made up of. So, you know, CMMS is nothing new. We've been doing all of this since really we got on the computers. GIS was usually loaded on somebody's computer, had a local machine. He was a GIS guy. He would do the maps, print them out, hang them on a wall. CAS Works, there was four or five users. They would really hand out maps, hand out work orders, and people would leave and go do their business and come back and kind of download that, give it to the guy, and everybody would put it in the computer. So it was a little bit disconnected. Cornerstoning complies the same way. I think, so those three pieces are Public Works. And then other, CWLP uses Maximo, they're still in it a little bit. Fleet uses Asset Works, ProtoProd, and there's many other ways that people are kind of tracking work. Excel, you know, send in emails, send in phone calls, things like that. The new platform does away with those silos and it has the authoritative data in the map, in the work order, in the PLL, in the request. And then all these other pieces are connected to it. So we've connected ProtoProd, we have a equipment transfer. So there's no one sitting there doing double entry at Fleet and at Public Works. They enter the data that we sync it to our machines. Same thing with human resources. Nobody's double entry, names, rates, things like that. It's all kind of connected in the background. There's some other things on here. Our Julie Dig tickets, we used to get those in at Electric. They would send an email to the other four locators. They would print out and they would pick up pieces of paper, go and paint the streets and the yards and go back after another load of paper. So we've sped that process up. So ArcGIS was the first piece that we did in 2013. Decision was made to go this new platform. We built a database. We established it. Part of that, part of that release, we put maps on phones. So the guys carried around big paper maps in their trucks. We give it to them on a phone in their pocket and that kind of changed the game. After that, we did the Julie tickets and rolled that out. And then that opened the door for City Works. We bought City Works. We went live in 2015. Brought CWLP Electric and Transmission Distribution in 2018. PLL went live in 2018. So we can do a lot of things with City Works and the way it maps and, you know, the little sketch I show here on the left is a map somebody did with all the sewer calls. Not sure when it was done. It's dead data. The middle picture is my computer screen. I made that search in about 10 minutes and it basically shows all of the sewer calls. And it shows where we do have positive SSOs. So I think there was sixty-three SSOs and 600 calls in the last fiscal year. And then flip a switch and the heat map turns on and we can kind of more pinpoint where these problems are happening. So, you know, this is a kind of a, it's a bad word here, but a study. Studies get done and they compile all this information that we're talking about, inspections and requests and work orders and such. And this is an ongoing study. So all this is ready whenever somebody needs to see, hey, where are the, where are the problems happening in town? And then I really touched on this piece here, keeping the City Works train on the tracks. So there's a lot of people involved in this. We have a steering committee, a designer committee, asset owners that are meeting all the time, and then the ISD technical staff. They really do a lot of the heavy lifting, as well as we do have a consultant on standby for that. Patrick and I were working on this over the past few months. It's been slow, but I think it's ready to roll out sometime very soon. We're going to start putting reporter problems straight into City Works. So what that means is somebody fills out a reporter problem, just like they do now, instead of sending an email to maybe Nate's secretary or, you know, trying to find an engineer that's at work, these requests are going to go straight to the supervisors. And hopefully that speeds up the process a little bit. And we're real excited about that. So that's coming this month. Nate wanted me to give you a heads up on what we're doing now. All this is kind of set in place. Everything's working well. I said that GIS was implemented back in 2013. There was, there's been a lot of updates and technology growth. So we're going to kind of do a little foundation work on City Works. That is the GIS. So we're going to improve the GIS. Once that's done, the spring or summer, that's going to accelerate the speed I can get all these maps to you guys. So I'm going to put, I wish I could show you, but there's, we have an enterprise portal. Have you guys seen the enterprise portal? No? I will forward it to all the committee members tomorrow. It has maps that you've seen, the corporate limits maps, the TIFF maps, all those, the old maps that we have on the website. But it's, it's got more. It's got some dashboards. It's got some annexation, new annexation maps that we put together. It's really exciting, the capability we have with it. It's kind of an internal map, so ISD does manage groups that we share inside the network and then we can share to the public too. That's really helped our snow operation. Before, the last few years, we would have to hand out secondary credentials. So the guys have to remember passwords and, you know, logins. And if you only have to remember that a few times a year, it's hard, it's hard to maintain that. So I was real excited to get this in place where they just log in and away they go. So that's about the extent of my presentation. Does anyone have questions?
Let me look. Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Riley, thank you for the presentation this evening. I'm really excited about the process of us having, as elected officials, as well as the public, having the ability to get things in the system faster and not have to do so many emails. But for us sitting in the horseshoe around the council, when we turn something in presently, a lot of times, obviously, it's either phone call or email gets put in the system. And in particular, Public Works has been really good at sending an email that verifies that it's in the system. So we know that it's in the process of being addressed. With this new system, how will we be able to, as elected officials, follow up and kind of track the process of whatever, let's say it's a pothole request. And the reason why that's important is not only do we need to get back to our constituents, but at times they'll call, you know, a few days later, hey, what's the status? What's going on? And rather than all the phone calls and emails back and forth, it would be nice if we had a mechanized.
So what's going to happen is you're going to put the request in and fill out all your information. Your name, number, address is required.
Yep.
So email address. So when you submit that ticket, it's going to forward you an email. It's going to have a SR number, and that SR number is your tracking number. That's done by ISD. And then the kind of future plan is to update you on work order status. So there's all kinds of different statuses in there. You know, if the guy switches from new to active, you would get that update. So that's something that we're working on.
Great.
Yeah. So we can kind of keep the public and you guys.
I was hoping that'd be the answer, so thank you.
Great.
It's good to hear.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. So when they report a problem, they're not actually keying information into City Works, right? Because I could see that being a real problem. Because they may not be keying in the way we want things, phrases and, you know.
So they do have the opportunity to add comments. When the call takers take your emails or someone emails from reported problem, they copy that out of the email and paste it into City Works. So we get exactly what they're talking about.
But they're not actually, that reporter problem isn't in City Works. That's, it's an outside, a separate thing, right?
Yeah. Patrick uses an API, which is, it's Application Programming Interface. So he can get, he can backdoor this data in.
Right.
So he takes all their information on the website and then he copies it in to City Works and puts it where it needs to be in City Works for our guys to read it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Redpath.
I think you answered my question with Alderman Donlin's question, but after a job is done, is there, does it log it in there? Did you say that? Does it log it in that it's been completed?
So right now, there's nothing that's going to say, we're done with this project. It's just going to say, here's your number and your way to track it. That's kind of the idea with these status changes. It goes from new to closed and it's going to send you an update that says, hey, we're either not going to do any work and here's the Public Works number and call them and figure out why. Or, yeah, we're done with it and then it's kind of, that's the plan.
So I've got a street light that I've had out for a long time and it's, they've told me they fixed it, but I keep getting phone calls on it. And so how would, if it's a repeat call, would the supervisor be able to pick that up or somebody pick it up and say, what's going on here? It says it's done and it's not?
Yeah. And the call takers would, they've been trained to look at the map, zero in on the street light, run a search and figure out if there's any calls on it. If there are, they kind of add to that ticket. If they're not, they're just making a new ticket. So what will happen, hopefully, Patrick has talked about making a portal that you can enter that number in and see everything about the ticket. Well, not everything, but dates, times, statuses, and things like that, that you can actually go to the website and figure out what's going on with that street light.
That's, I was just, as a, you know, follow up, just to, you know, I keep getting the same phone call and they keep saying it's done. So, all right, thanks.
Yep.
Alderwoman Connelly.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a quick kind of follow up again to Alderman Donlin. Is, will there be capacity for more than one email to get responses on a single ticket?
Right now, there is not.
Could I request that maybe that be included? Because I have people who reach out to me and they want to follow along with what's going on, but they also, you know, I mean, I hate to say this for better or worse, sometimes people think that if you contact, you know, your Alderman for your ward, that that's going to heighten the attention of the work order. And I have people who are, you know, like, yeah, I'll keep you looped in on the progress of this. It'd be nice that if I put the order in for them, that I can include their email as a contact too, so it's not just me.
So in City Works, in the comment section, I can do an @Riley and an @Nate and it would, and then I could enter the caller information and they would send those emails to me and the caller. So there's, that goes on in City Works.
Isn't that kind of your internal system, though?
Yeah. I don't know why we wouldn't be able to build that into the system. That's something we'll take a look at, though.
I'd appreciate it. It'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potts. I appreciate you. Anything else, sir?
No, thanks.
All right. Good job. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All righty. Before we move along here, I want to acknowledge former Alderman Steve Dove is in the crowd. We just wanted to say hello, sir. Good to meet you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Welcome back.
I'm about to go back and read here.
Flashbacks, poor guy.
Next, we have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Mr. Clark, could you please read those ordinances?
Will do. 2021-336, 2021-337, 2022-076.
Is there any movement on any of these?
Mr.?
Yes, Mr.? Yeah.
Thank you. If we could withdraw, please. 2021-336, we have a revised ordinance relating to that roadway safety issue, which will be filed on Friday. So we could withdraw this 336.
I'm moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for withdrawal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there any other Alderman Redpath? I apologize.
I'm sorry. Also, 2022-076 is an annexation. If you may recall, we did have to hold that because of the publication. That publication now has been perfected. So if you would, if you could send this on for debate, that would be appropriate at this time because the appropriate publication has been completed.
That was my question.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded for debate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Redpath, you.
That was what, that was what I was.
All right, thank you, sir. Just wanted to make sure. Any other questions before we move on? Now for ordinances and for committee consideration.
CWLP, 2022-092, an ordinance authorizing payment to the Energy Authority Incorporated and Mid-Continent Independent Systems Operator Incorporated for transmission schedule fees for the fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $4,685,715 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm still looking for everybody's hands. I'm sorry.
2022-093, an ordinance approving a farm lease number 1060 with Lance Hedrick for a one-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. There is discussion. Alderman Redpath.
Could, is somebody here that could talk about the farm leases? Director?
I understand that we're in the middle of negotiating a lot of these. Is that correct? We had some problems with one last year that we ran into and.
Yeah, for the hunting ones.
Yes. This is not a hunting one?
No, I don't think so. This was, this was a farm lease.
Okay.
For, yeah, it's for two acres of pasture for agricultural purposes.
But we are looking at the hunting leases. Is that correct?
We had a few of those, maybe like two council meetings ago, maybe. But the ones that were of issue last year, we decided not to lease them, period, though.
Okay.
Just because of the issues.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. 2022-094, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of a lease agreement for 4121 Greenberry Road, Site 95, for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? No opposed? Ayes have it?
Public Works, 2022-095, an ordinance declaring the street name of an approximately 950-foot segment of road to be officially recorded and known hereby as East Shore Lane for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? No opposed? Ayes have it?
2022-096, an ordinance approving plan for large-scale development of Ambrose at Panther Creek for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? No opposed? Ayes have it?
General City Business, 2022-097, an ordinance authorizing payment to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $61,269 for the annual maintenance fee for e-crash e-citation reporting systems for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Present.
Mr. Chair, real quick. I'm sorry, I didn't use my.
It's all right. It's all right. Alderman Hanauer.
Just like to ask on 2022-096, if I could be added as a sponsor?
Will do.
It's been noted, sir. All right. So it's been moved and seconded for consent. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Ayes have it?
2022-098, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $29,649 to Clint Warnisher, a city of Springfield firefighter, for settlement of workers' compensation claim number 18-WC-031425.
Move for consent. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Ayes have it?
2022-099, an ordinance reappointing Roger W. Holmes as Inspector General for the city of Springfield.
For debate?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for debate. Any discussion on this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Ayes have it?
2022-100, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Jasmine L. Wolfolk to the Police Community Review Commission.
For debate?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for debate. Any discussion? I will say thank you, Ms. Jasmine Wolfolk. I've known her for some time. Thank you for continuing to serve on this board. I appreciate you. All in favor? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? No opposed? Ayes have it?
2022-101, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Marcus Lucas to the Springfield Community Review Commission.
For debate?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for debate. Any discussion? I'll also say, Mr. Johnson, it's been a pleasure to sit back and see you work a little bit and have some discussions with you. And you're doing a fine job and I appreciate you leading this commission. Thank you, sir. It's been moved and seconded for debate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Ayes have it?
2022-102, an ordinance approving the appointment of Michael L. Jameson II as Information Systems Division Director.
Move for debate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for debate. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Alderwoman?
If anyone is here and wants to come up and introduce themselves, they should have the opportunity to do that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, come on up. I apologize.
Hi, Mike Jameson. Nice to meet all of you. A little bit about my background. I most recently came from the state of Illinois, where I was a manager over end user computing. Part of that, I was an IT director, a horseman over IT governance and asset management. Been in IT for over 15 years. I've been in supervisory roles for 13 of that, so.
Thank you for being willing to serve.
What's that?
I said, thank you for being willing to serve.
Appreciate you, man. You look like you was eager to get up there and tell us about yourself.
Well, I was waiting for it.
I feel you. You smooth, you clean on us. I appreciate you.
I can tell you, if he was over end user computing, he's crazy, so. That's a rough place, man.
All right. It's been moved and seconded for debate. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Ayes have it?
2022-102-103, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D local licenses by Laguna Brava Mexican Restaurant, LLC, doing business as Laguna Brava Mexican Restaurant located at 2466 Walbash Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noted. 2022-104, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D local licenses by Turbo FP Corporation, doing business as Indian Cuisine, located at 3114 South Sixth Street.
Move to consent. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Present.
Noted. 2022-105, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D local licenses by Turbo FP Corporation, doing business Indian Cuisine, located at 4151 Walbash Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Noted.
All right. Ayes have it? Is there any unfinished business for this, uh, committee? Indeed. Mr. Mayor.
Your microphone's still out, Mayor.
Mayor, why don't you announce it so I don't mess up the time and the date and all that fun stuff? I can go into my calendar, but go ahead.
Got, uh, uh, Alderman Donlin can speak to it in detail, but they have an, a Cokie Mill Road public forum on, it'll be Monday, April fourth, from four o'clock to six o'clock at Cokie Mill Christian Church. That's four seven five South Cokie Mill Road. But it, uh, goes over the development from Washington Street to the old Jacksonville Road.
Yeah, and it is an open house format where you don't have to come and stay the whole time, and, uh, I appreciate Public Works and Mayor, your office, and you, uh, getting us this far. This is a big deal for wards eight and nine in particular, let alone the whole city, and hopefully we can continue to move forward, but anxious to get the public input as far as, uh, not only them learning what we're planning on doing for the area, but, uh, what can be done. Uh, maybe somebody will have a different idea that help change things up, but always, I know the director is always interested in the public's input, so.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Yeah, this, this is going to be a big change for,
It is.
Wards eight and nine. Um, strongly encourage people to come and, and see the, the proposal that we have for the, um, major improvements to Cokie Mill, which is getting a lot more traffic, even, even with the flooding that Ward nine is responsible for.
Actually, I think it comes from eight into nine, but we won't get into that.
Eight's very careful about that.
Any other?
I do encourage people to come out to that. It's, it's going to be a big thing, um, sending out a meeting invite for, through Facebook and, and some emails too, so, thank you.
Any other unfinished business? I know we got a request to speak, but I like to make sure till we get used to it. Um, any new business? Yep. Ald- Alderman handout.
Thank you. Um, I just want to congratulate one of our, uh, firefighters, Captain Jim McMahon. Uh, he was inducted into the Illinois High School Football Coaches Hall of Fame on Saturday. Um, Jimmy's been with SHG for over, over probably thirty years now. Well, I know over thirty years. He's, as an assistant, he's, uh, got over three hundred wins, and he is an excellent coach and excellent mentor towards kids and, and, um, I, I think he's a pretty good firefighter too, but, uh, uh, I just wanted to congratulate him.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that, uh, Alderman Gregory, um, Alderwoman Purchase, and myself were having a litter pickup on May fourteenth. Um, all you have to do is look around the city and see how much litter there is in every single one of our wards. It's ridiculous, so I would really love a citywide concerted effort to pick up litter or make this a citywide cleanup day because it could do a lot of good and it would be probably less stress on Public Works to just have it all in one day than to have it scattered around.
I would second that for sure.
Yeah, so, just want to get that out and put it, put that out there ahead of time.
Absolutely. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I've, I've been getting questions about the, um, some of the proposed fire station changes. Um, Mayor reached out to you and we're going, I just want to, I think some people have actually seen what's going on with the zoning, um, that the location on, on Rickard Road and, um, Lawrence is, has been identified as a station location, so just want to reassure people. We've talked about this in the past, that we will also have a public meeting to go over what that station change means, where that, that movement, that location change means for Ward eight, um, a- and surrounding wards. Station eight is pretty close to Ward nine also, but, um, you know, Mayor, and I know we've, we've talked about that, um, probably late April, early May, having something in place so that people can, can come in and, and hear from the fire department directly with, about their concerns, with response times, and, and how this, you know, it's a big change and it's going to impact people in the community, and so they're, they're following this pretty closely. And then I have a new business thing, but I can hold that if the chair requests.
It's, it's no worries.
New business.
I mean, I thought we were unfinished.
Go ahead, or you're gonna have to hit your thing.
And just real quickly, and I, I did have, um, you know, I have been emailing with, um, with our, our Public Works Director, but I continue to get complaints from people, um, who have neighbors who put their garbage out with just bags and no cans. I know that's a requirement of the city. It's, it is really important. We're starting to see critters getting into bags. Um, I hadn't, I had one neighborhood where a bag was not real heavy and full, and some of that wind we had recently was just blowing stuff all over the place, so there was, there were rolling garbage bags. So it is important that all of our garbage companies follow the rules for, um, collection, that collection be done in cans and not just bags that are left on the street, on the street, so, um, and I appreciate Director Bottom is on top of this, obviously. He's, he responded, but if anyone else has issues with this in their wards, um, it's only one company that I've, I've ever gotten complaints about, so, um, you know, I think, I think it's important that the, all of the companies are ensuring that the garbage bags are in cans for collection. Thank you.
All right, I agree. Uh, Mayor Langfelder.
Yeah, just want to, uh, make sure everybody's aware, the, this Thursday, March thirty-first, from four to seven at Bank of Springfield Center, there's going to be the Rail Improvements Open House. And no formal presentation. They'll have, uh, different stations set up that talk about the rail project, so there's your opportunity to go in and ask questions of the individual experts, and Nate Bottom, of course, our director, will be there. Right, Nate?
Alderman Red Path, then we'll go, uh, Alderwoman Purchase.
Today is, uh, Vietnam Veterans Day. If you know a Vietnam veteran, please wish him Happy Veterans Day. Thanks.
Absolutely.
My pawpaw.
Alderwoman.
Um, we have First Fridays coming up, First Friday coming up this Friday from four to eight downtown, and then we also have the half marathon on Saturday that starts, um, it starts downtown and it goes through Washington Park, Oak Ridge Cemetery, Lincoln Park, and then back downtown. So we encourage you all to come out, and we encourage everyone to cheer these people on as they get to the finish line. I will be handing them water and blankets if it's cold, and then we'll have a after-party celebration on the Addams Family Block between Fourth and Fifth at Buzzbomb and Cafe Moxo.
All right.
That was a lot.
Uh, Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question of Alderwoman DeSenzo. What was the date of that pickup?
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth. Uh, I've specifically had calls and seen myself issues that we have, uh, along Brunson Lane and West Washington. It gets bad, I think, not to throw the, uh, fair hills under the bus, but a lot of it comes from there, just due to the wind. And, uh, we would be, we've done pickups before in that area. Would, I'd be interested in seeing how we could coordinate that as a part of this as well, because you just can't do it alone. You gotta have
Absolutely.
multiple, and that is your Ward eight as well, so.
I think maybe we should have a bigger conversation about that.
Let's do it.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Count us in.
Let's do it.
Fantastic.
And Alderman Williams.
Fifteenth.
Oh, fourteenth, right?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so, um, uh, Public Works Director, I got a question. So, uh, the code says forty-eight hours from garbage. You put your garbage out, it gets picked up, cans must be back up to the house, uh, within forty-eight hours. Um, what's the enforcement of that, or how do we police this when, uh, we continuously have, um, residents that, that don't comply to that?
Uh, so we would send our housing inspectors to check it out, so if there are any specific locations that you're noticing issues, we can, we can send the appropriate, a housing inspector out and you contact, uh, Daryl Harris or myself, or, or the Housing Division.
Inspector, um, at that time that they go out, I mean, do they give them a letter? Do they give them a fine? What happens?
I'll have to double-check the actual process on, on, on how that works, and it depends if it's a repeat.
Okay, because I have several residents in one area that just feels like it's on the books, but it's not enforced. You know, and, and I'm trying to help them with this now that they've convinced me that this continually happens.
All right, yep. Let me know the location, and we'll definitely send an inspector out there, and then we'll have them cite accordingly.
Okay, and I, I need to learn the process to make sure the person's fined or whatever punishment or penalty they must suffer for not doing this. I mean, I realize that a lot of people say, well, you know, we got so many other more important things to do, but this is a continuous situation in a particular part of a neighborhood association, and, and, um, these several residents just leave it out. It's easier for them to just let it sit out front, like, as they say, you know, and right now, we have something that says they must comply with, with the rest of this and bring it up to their house or to the side or whatever they do over there, and it hasn't been getting taken care of. So I, I'll get with you and, and learn what that process is, because maybe it's going to take to make that example before they, they comply, you know?
Right. Uh, just to follow up on that, I, um, I would ask that, that, um, maybe you could get with our communications director, and let's, 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 uh, put out an email blast about that within the, within our trash can rules. My, I had a question come to me since we're on this garbage. Are, are garbage cans supposed to be in the front or the back for, for the areas that have licensed, um, alleys, or is there any particular rule? Maybe that's a question.
Yeah, it depends upon the, upon the hauler, uh, and where they actually pick up, so, um, so, but we can check on that if there are any issues.
The reason, the reason why I ask, because, you know, on some streets we have, uh, for instance, waste management. Sometimes some people they pick up in the front, some people they pick up in the back. I, I don't know if we can coordinate that a little better, um, to help out, you know, uh, uh, where people put in their trash and stuff. Um, but I definitely think we can coordinate with our communications team to really push that out. In fact, I think we, we probably need to work on a whole, uh, keep our city litter clean and billboards, all that stuff. I think, I think it's time to really push that message out on our community.
We'll work with the haulers on where they pick up in their, the different locations, see if we can do some geolocating or something along those lines and, and push something out, and we'll work with communications director. And every, there should be lids on, on every single can regardless, so just, just let everybody know that.
We appreciate you. Alderwoman DeSenzo.
I'm going to pile on the trash here. Um, getting lots of complaints that waste management is just skipping people all over town, uh, especially in the Harvard Park area. We've, I'm sure Alderman Gregory has received these complaints as well, but skipping whole streets for weeks at a time.
Yeah, and please let Adina and myself know that so that we can address that accordingly too. Thanks.
Mayor.
Yeah, just want to, uh, let everybody know, I think it was, uh, well, yesterday, the Director of National Park Services came into town.
Yes.
Um, you know, coordinated by the NAACP, and the intent was to hopefully get the, um, Race Riot Site along the Tenth Street Corridor recognized as a ni- national, uh, site under the auspices of, uh, the Lincoln Home Area. So, um, be a great opportunity to tell Springfield's history and how it impacts the, uh, rest of the country and the world, for that matter, being the home of Abraham Lincoln, and everybody, a lot of people know that, of course, and same with the President Barack Obama, but the history that's not told as much is the, what I call the arc or the bridge in the middle, is the, uh, Race Riot Site, uh, or the Race Riot that led to the formation of the NAACP. So, um, it was a good visit. I know Alderman Williams and Alderman Gregory were there. Unfortunately, uh, you know, during the day, that's all that could make it. But, uh, there'll be other discussions as we move forward.
All right. Now it's time for requests, uh, to, to address the committee. Um, I see we do have some citizens signed up. Mr. Clerk?
Nadine Wright.
As we do come up to address the committee, please keep comments, uh, to the, to the fact of the matter and address the chair.
Greetings, Council and Honorable Mayor Langfelder, our, and our hard-working Alderman, Ward Three, Mr. Roy Williams. Um, thank you all, first of all, for allowing me to speak here on tonight. Nadine Wright, some of you may know, um, I am the President of the Adlova Estates Neighborhood Association. And, um, we do have here with me tonight my Secretary, Ms. Patricia, and also my Vice President, Mr. Logan Neville is here with us on tonight. So, tonight, I come to represent our neighborhood at the Adlova Estates Neighborhood Association. The A E N A was originally established with covenants and articles of bylaws. A little nervous here. In nineteen ninety-two by Mr. Adlova himself. And here, I don't know if you guys like to, Mr. Neville, would you please present the other, um, covenants to this side, please? Pass that around, please. Thank you, sir. And this side, you can look at those. So here we are tonight to address the Council and the Mayor, of course, and those are in the audience. Um, just to bring you up to speed here, on this twenty-ninth day of March twenty-second, our first inquiry is that we are here to make, uh, to, we are here to present to the Council and the Mayor and let you all be aware of some of the unbelievable activities that are going on in Adlova Estates. So, with that being said, um, my mother, Annie Lee Stokes, she was, she passed away in twenty seventeen. And I reside there. I've been residing there over ten years. My stepfather, Mr. Robert Joe Lewis, is there with me as well as some other family members. So, me being the resident, took on this position of the Adlova Estates President. My parents have been there since nineteen ninety-two. Took a passion for me to take this position. So we are here in concern about our neighborhood, and, um, as she passed away in twenty seventeen, Fourth of July, um, I have been concerned about this neighborhood. So, as you look at those covenants and those bylaws there, they were ju- originally created by Mr. Adlova. We are here on behalf of the Adlova Estates Neighborhood Association we were established on last year. And, um, we are concerned about the activities, the unbeliev- believable, incredible things that are going on in our neighborhood that were brought to my attention upon becoming the president, which made our residents very, very concerned. Our Alderman is aware of these activities as well. We have, he's been in with our Zoom meetings as well. We want to thank him for allowing us to use his Zoom as we were able to establish our own Zoom. We do have a bank account. We are with the Secretary of State as well as our EIN with the Internal Revenue. So, here we are. Uh, we are concerned with the things that are going on in our neighborhood association. Uh, number one, drugs, prostitution, lots of unbelievable and inappropriate activities going on on Carl Prairie and on Stuyler. So, as we come to this point, we are concerned about the speeding that's going on in our neighborhood that comes in off of Taylor, that goes around the corner to Carl Prairie to engage in these activities. I'm not sure if the Chief of Police is here tonight or our assigned police officer. I don't think that they're here. Is that correct?
Yes, he's right there.
Oh, hey, he's right there. Hello, Mr. Ch- Chief of Police. So, with our meetings, in our meetings, with our residents and our officers, they're very concerned. Mr., uh, our Alderman has been in some of our meetings as well. Thank you, Mr. Williams. We are very concerned for the safety of ourselves and our children, our grandchildren, and we want to bring this attention to this Council and our honorable mayor. We know that our Alderman cannot do this alone, so we want to bring this to your attention to see if we can get some more support and help from our Chief Police and our assigned police officer. So, inquiry number two, right now, as we are here in this meeting on tonight, we have a resident in our neighborhood that is not a homeowner, that is a renter, which, um, the owner lives, I believe, in Africa. I know he's out of, they're out of state, out of the United States. And, um, we are concerned because just recently, there has been a trailer put in his driveway that is connected to the house that lives there, that is, I don't know what they're doing, but I do know that there's, um, some things going on that should not be going on over there.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your, your time is running out, and, and for, for everyone else, but, 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 before you, before you go, it's all right.
Well, let me wrap this up.
But, what, we do hear your concerns, but what I do want you to do, so we can really get to them and we can fix them, um, I want you to see this gentleman behind you, Mr. Juan Hurtta, and our police chief over in this gold badge, and they are, we'll take care of- And they are, we'll take care of these things. These are very, very serious things that you are bringing up and we want to get to them quickly.
Okay, can I, can, can we just have thirty seconds of my Vice President? I'm gonna let him go ahead and close and I will uh, get with those gentlemen. Can Mr. Logan please come up and just maybe have two minutes? I didn't know we had a.
He he declined to speak right now, but I promise you, we're gonna, we're gonna get this, we're gonna get this, 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 this rolling for you, I promise you.
Thank you so much. You all have a good evening.
You're welcome.
You too.
Mr. Clerk.
Curtis Yocum.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mr. Yocum.
Good evening, Mr. Yocum.
Name is Curtis Yocum. I work at the Public Works Street Department uh, in the Sewer Division. Been with the city for about sixteen years. I'm here tonight to talk about diversity within the Public Works. And I am talking mainly about the operators' positions. We have truck driver labors and operators. The operators are more skilled positions, pay more. We have twenty ops at Public Works, I believe. Um, the water department has five or six and lake service maybe two or three. So just under thirty. There's only two. Within those three departments, two persons of color, minority, two. The last one's been hired and was in twenty seventeen, been five years. Since then, they've hired five white males, some from the hall, maybe some independent elsewhere. Also, the five that has came over from the power plant, not, not, don't get me wrong, I understand, nobody wants to lose their job and get laid off. But these are not operators, they're material handlers. They, they're getting on the drop, job training. The five that didn't come from there, one of them was, is a rehire that was let go years ago. And I talked to Legal and Legal says, well, Curtis, he can reapply after two years. Okay, fine. Now, word on the street is that the guy let, they let go just last summer. Let go. Word on the street is, he's getting his job back. That's the word on the street down at Public Works. That don't pan out if a guy's got to wait two years. I'm just saying. It's not adding up. So I'm putting this out here for you guys to know. If you don't know the numbers, now you know. Uh, it's unacceptable, totally. I've, I know candidates that have applied, minority candidates, they cannot get any traction on getting hired. It is just not happening. If there was, if the numbers, say the numbers was different, say there was eighteen persons of color down there, operators, I'm sure that'd be a totally different story. If there was eighteen black operators down there and two white. If I got white coworkers coming to me and saying, Curtis, this, this doesn't look good, then there's a problem. And I do have white coworkers coming to me saying it doesn't look good. So something needs to be done. I've reached out to Nate, we've had conversations, Director. Um, and he knows there's a problem. He knows there's a problem. And I just want to get something done. I talked to the mayor, I don't know, three weeks ago, maybe. Uh, we talked and he said maybe some other jobs or crews might need to be opened up for solid waste crews. I know there is some retiring coming up, uh, but I'm just asking you guys to know the numbers, ask questions, because to have twenty operators at Public Works and there's only two black. It's, it's not a good thing. And and the reason, I'm not patting myself on the back, but the only reason those two are there? In twenty sixteen, that was Director Mahoney, I had to go to him and talk to him. And he said, Curtis, totally, understand. Because at the time, we only had one and he was on his way out with retirement. So I worked with Director Mahoney to get two on. And I'm trying to work with the mayor and the Director Nate to try to get something else done. Darryl Harris, I tried to reach, talk to him, he, he, he runs away from me like I got COVID. I don't know what's up with you, bro. I, I don't know. But there's something, and you, you the deputy.
I got you.
Okay, he's, I'm just saying.
I got you.
Um, I want, I want, I want, like to set for something to get done. So that's my time. Anybody got any questions?
I appreciate you coming up. So, so, so my question would be, um, you, you say you do know some, some, some gentlemen that, 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 that have applied and stuff?
Sean, when I got a, when I got a problem, I got a solution. I got a list of four names right here. And they're, they're all have applied, three of them's out of the hall, one's independent, and I believe two of them has had one interview, nothing else. And 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 their skill level, like I said, they're out of the hall. So you have these material handlers now that came from the power plant, they've never seen, really seen a piece of equipment. They're, they're getting on job training. It's not right. And you put them in these higher paying positions, they could have came in as truck driver labors. I mean, since twenty seventeen.
Alright, um, thank you, brother.
Yep.
Thank you.
You need to, excuse me, uh, you, you need to use the system because I needed it.
That's right.
Well, tell me then, Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, Alderman Williams.
You come back up for a minute, sir, please. I mean, we got a new system and we're getting used to it. We're, we're getting used to it, you know. I want, excuse me. So uh, so how long have you, you been on your, in your position, on your job?
Uh, I've been with the city for sixteen years. I've been with the sewer, I've been over the sewer division uh, for uh, five.
Okay, so you know, uh, I, I was approached about this situation and I, I believe when this council took the vote, uh, w- we saw they're saving your union brothers' jobs, you know, we, we, we saw they're saving jobs. And 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 uh, I think that's a good thing. I think even you would want us to, if we closed down a part of the plant and then we got some folks that may lose jobs and we move them other places, that's a good thing. Now, I just want you to understand that the council doesn't have control over what, what these, how they get transferred into what positions, what pay level, this and that. And and I'll be honest with you, that was my first time hearing that this bypassed these minorities as well as uh, the qualifications, you keep using the word skilled. And uh, finally, I guess, um, if there's any kind of fairness issues. My response to the people who approached me with it was, well, wha- what is your union saying about it? Because to me, and I don't even think it's a mayor or a director situation, you would think the two unions uh, uh, would be able to weigh in on, on, on the fairness issue and the who's going above who.
You, you, you would, you would think, I mean, that, I'm not in that union, but you think the operators' union would, would get a hold of the mayor or the director and say, how, how is your numbers? What is your numbers of minorities? You think they would do that? Um, that, that I can't control.
Yes.
That, that's out of my hands, so.
I understand, and that's all I'm asking you to do is understand on the council aspect of it, we trying to save the jobs, that's why that vote was taken.
Understand.
What happened after that, it gets a little more complicated than anything that we could control, I think.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I, I get it. And like I said, it's, 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 you, I think you need to ask questions. Uh, I mean, if you, because you don't know the numbers. If, if you know, and 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 somebody says, okay, where the, the mayor says or the director said we're moving these over to the operators, be operators. Well, it's what, okay, what's your numbers, what's, what's your numbers looking like, mayor, as far as, as the operators? How, what, what, there's, there's five whites coming from the power plant over to?
Yes.
And you haven't hired a black since twenty seventeen, or a minority, or a lady, or, or, or Asian, or, or Hispanic. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So.
I, I just wanted to make sure you understood this.
Okay, yeah, nope.
That's all I have.
Mayor Langfelder.
Yes, since we're talking about numbers, uh, Public Works, uh, you know, all due respect to, to Director Mahoney, uh, really, uh, any director, it's the mayor's initiative. I sign off on all the hires, so. Uh, with regards to the numbers, Public Works, when we came into office, was at sixteen percent minorities, now they're, I think, at twenty-three percent. And overall, the city, I'm going from memory, was about nine percent, now we're at sixteen percent, and that's due to all departments. So if we want to talk about numbers, let's talk about numbers.
With, with all due respect, Mayor, that's, that's, it's, it's not.
And it's not, it's not, I'm not directing at you, I'm just talking numbers. But with regards to unions, that's fine, they each have their lane. And so uh, with regards to, um, you know, uh, we work with each one and we're talking about operators and everybody around this horseshoes for equality. And we all are for protecting our employees, especially during a pandemic, and where we're shutting down the power plant. You know, they have families just like everybody else, and they're in the operators. Can you imagine if we had ASME members being impacted and then we're bringing in operators to take over the ASME jobs? I mean, it's across those union lines that, uh, you know, that's, I think Alderman Williams is right, it's uh, for the, you know, the unions to work out as far as that goes, but you know, we have a open policy with regards to hiring and that's why the numbers have improved since we've been in office. And that's just not myself, that's everybody working hard uh, with regards to that. So, you know, uh, the Police Department, they've done a fabulous job, Public Works has done a good job. Uh, there's other departments that need work. Uh, that's why I've asked the Fire Department to put their test out again because it doesn't reflect the diversity that we'd all like to see. So that's a challenge for all of us. So with the names, it's just not operators, it's across all areas and it's going to get more challenging because of the workforce training. And that's what we're trying to move towards, is how do we get better engagement with the job opportunities that we have within the city of Springfield and uh, be able to retain people. But when we close the plants, and this is for any employee, we're going to stand by our employees and try not to put them out on the streets. You know, we're trying to put them into a transitional uh, phase, and that's what this was all about. So you did have five individuals or whatever the number was came from the utility. Everybody knew that, that we were going to prioritize transitioning them. And even though it was a, a pay up, they took pay cuts because they pay better at the utility. I think everybody
Yeah.
pretty much knows that. So these individuals took a pay cut to take those jobs um, or to apply for them or whatever the case may be, but that was a, by plan of action that we would transition individuals and not just cut them loose.
Well, can I, sure, but you gotta address me. In my original, in my original uh, speech, I said, I, I don't recommend anybody getting laid off. So I, no, I don't want to see anybody getting laid off. And and also, as far as the numbers go, as far as minority numbers, the demographics, yeah, that's fine, but, but the minorities are coming in at the lower level positions. They're not getting these higher positions as operators. So, yeah, the numbers, they're, they're not, they, they look good, but they're not getting the higher paying positions as operators. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Sure, Mayor. I guess uh, Nate could probably speak to this better than I could, but in his budget presentation, I think it showed Public Works has gone from eleven percent, I think, in management, eleven percent. This is under Nate Bottom, it wasn't under a previous director, up to, I think, twenty-seven percent management. So that's a commitment to minority representation, diversity with regards to management. And we cannot control the unions, unfortunately, and that's why we tried to do workforce development. That's why we are going to be coming with a housing initiative, and hopefully the council supports it, is to teach the crafts. And how would we teach the crafts? It's within a house. A house, you have electrical, you have plumbing, you have labor work, all of that. And it's uh, teaching an individual all those different crafts, multi-core crafts. And that would be a pre-apprenticeship program, and the whole intent of this council um, taking the support initiative that we'd have to have diversity within our TIP projects, things of that nature, is fifty-one percent. It wasn't for unions, what it was is for diversity in the unions. And how do we get that? Is employing city residents. Because if you look at the population of Springfield, the minority population is a lot higher than if you looked at Sangamon County or what have you. So we had that program uh, moving towards that direction, but we are going to come with a housing initiative to uh, teach individuals the crafts and hopefully that parlay's into union diversification. Because that's been a challenge, uh, you could talk to different unions to go, look, I'm glad you do have the four names to come forward. You know, they'll be interviewed as far as that goes and move forward, uh, but that's a challenge across many different unions. And of course, we only can hopefully increase the level of the pipeline, so to speak, to improve the numbers. But it's all about outreach, which you're doing, which we appreciate, but a lot of work needs to be done. We've made some progress, but there's greater progress to be made.
Well, well, Mayor, I can remember even before I got, you know, to Public Works back, you know, probably sixteen, seventeen years ago, they used to, when the operator position was open, at one time, they would take a truck driver labor and give him the opportunity to move up. There's no opportunities there at Public Works to move up from a truck driver labor. There's, there's none. Um, and then they would eventually, next operator, they would go to the union, the, the hall. So I mean, that's something that maybe could be looked at.
Look at that.
That could possibly help.
So I, I, I appreciate you, Mr. Yocum. I know it's not easy to come up here in front of this, this body and we.
No, it's not, man. You know, I'd rather be home drinking a beer or something, man.
I know it's not, I know it's not, man. So, so I appreciate, especially when you got an issue like this and, 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 and you really just want to speak from your heart. So we, I, I appreciate you. And one thing I'm committed to, and I know my colleagues is committed to, is taking a look at ways that we can uh, um, really, really get our minority numbers up and people of color uh, uh, in good paying jobs in the city and you know, we, we won't stop until we, we really get, get, get there, so.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm, I wasn't coming up here trying to throw anybody under the bus or anything, man, you know, because I don't, hey, I, I don't want to get, you know, slapped. I want to be the Oscars, the Oscars, man, you know, I'm just saying, man.
Alright, man. We appreciate you. We, we really appreciate you.
That was a good way to end it.
Rose Stark.
Lost your train of thought there, go ahead, man.
Good evening, sorry, um, Ward, I'll just call you Ward members, and my good friend, Mayor Langfelder. Um, I'm here today because we have some issues. Number one is, is that um, we got, it seems like every year we get tons of citations for crap. Excuse my language, but that's what it is. Um, if we have kids' toys in our yard, we have to move them. They can't be out in the front yard, they have to be put somewhere else. Uh, we got a trailer and it's not a commercial trailer. It's a trailer for us to move like stuff to storage or our wheelchairs, power chairs. Um, because my husband and I both have to have a power chair for, for, uh, my right leg gives out, I may have permanent nerve damage. My husband's got cancer, C O P D and stuff, and um, there's a gentleman that's at Springfield Housing named Mr. Isaiah. I don't know his last name. He gave us permission to leave our trailer in the front yard as long as it was on two by sixteen blocks of uh, concrete. Um, then we got a citation, and matter of fact, we got citation two weeks late. Then we got another citation about a week before, or three days before it was supposed to be expired. So um, Mrs. Um, I'm sorry, can't think of her name right now, but she's one of the supervisors at Springfield Housing. She sent us a citation, this was within two months, sent us this citation telling us that we have to move our trailer from the front of our house because it can't be in the front of our house because it's a commercial trailer. Okay, number one is, they're sitting there talking to me about a commercial trailer and that's not what it's for. Number two is, you go down all of these streets, you see people that's got their cars parked up on the media, you see people that's got their business, uh, what is it called? Thing that they try, pull behind them, that's sitting on one side of the street and they've got a plug in it going across, running, a cord running across the street. They've got their business cart trucks sitting out on the street and you can't go down the street. I'm a paper carrier. I deliver on, from North Grand by Lanfair High School all the way to Ridge Avenue, at the end of Ridge Avenue. And you would not believe how much I see doing this, you know. Um, I go down the alleys in between, uh, there's one alley I go down in between Indiana and Ohio and the nine hundred block. And this little lady over here talked about trash, garbage being piled. Girlfriend, you need someone to go over there to look and see all that garbage that's piled up. It's wet, it's been, you can tell it's been there for a while. They don't do nothing about it. But somebody like me, that has toys in my yard, um, I have a trailer in my yard. Um, yeah, I have a couple of other things that we're trying to move, but I just had surgery last Tuesday. So I can't do a whole lot because I had surgery on my shoulder, my elbow, my arm, my hand. So I can't really do a lot. So I can't really do a lot. My husband can't do a lot due to the fact that he has cancer. The only reason why I came to the committee, because I think that the ward members need to know exactly what's going on. I don't know who my ward alderman is, sorry.
Right here.
Okay, I figured that was you, I wasn't for sure. Yes, sir. So I didn't know who my ward member was, but I've called Mr. Lane Filter's office and I've talked to the lady there. And Mayor, I'm sorry, can you apologize to your stubbornness for being such a witch to her? Because I told her, I want to talk to the mayor. She says, you can go before the council, you can talk to the council. I said, that's fine. So my main complaint is being, getting these citations almost every other month, every month. We've been there for 10 years, and within that 10 years, we've probably had 100 citations. That is ridiculous. Leave me alone, I've already called my attorney about it, my attorney says it's harassment. If it keeps going on, I'm filing charges for harassment. Because I can't do it no more, you know? They're running me out of Springfield. Right now, I'm looking to see, find a place out in the country where I don't have to put up with the city no more. I've lived in the city my whole life, I was born in Springfield, I've lived all over this city. I've never once been treated the way I'm being treated now. And I think that's wrong. If there's any comments, that's fine, I'll take them.
Alderman Williams. Yeah, so are they, are they, so these are actual code violations?
Yes.
That, that you are guilty of?
Well, no, I'm not actually guilty of, I don't feel I'm guilty of it. Like with me having a trailer parked in my yard, you know? It'd be different if it was full of trash, that would be different. But it's just a trailer that we had stuff on to move to storage. And then toys, we're not allowed to have kids' toys out in our yard. Well, if that's the case, then you better go and citeate all these other people that have a bunch of kids' toys out in their yard.
I mean, I think 100 violations is, is pretty, I mean, that's a lot of violations. So that's why I asked, are they actually code violations?
Some of them are code violations and some of them are just stupid, like for toys being in your yard. Or if I have aluminum cans, you know, because I collect cans, and I take them in the summertime. And if I have them in a certain spot, they tell me we have to move it. So we made a little bin for our aluminum cans to go into where they don't touch it, you know? I know someone talked something about the garbage cans. They talked about my garbage cans being in my front yard. Well, we're disabled, so we have a legal right to have them in our front yard. The garbage man comes up to our door and gets our garbage and takes it out to the road and dumps it. Then brings the cans back and set them back where they are.
Well, so have you talked with the inspector about that kind of thing you just mentioned?
They, that, they haven't got on us about that no longer.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, point of order. I think this is the kind of conversation that has to be taken place in a different context, a different situation.
But my main concern is the, the fact that they're, you know, we only have until the first to get our trailer moved out of our front yard. And I don't think that's fair.
I understand, so I'm gonna allow our mayor to speak and then we're gonna get you with our director so we can really look into this deeper. Thank you, Alderman McMenamin.
Yeah, also, I was gonna say is we'll look at the file associated with the 1017, North Indiana, and see what the issues are and make sure someone covers that with you and make sure there's no misunderstanding.
Okay, yeah, because when there's two, one person tells you one thing, another person tells you another thing. You know, just like my husband said, you know, that's not right.
Yeah, it has to be consistent.
Yeah, it's, it causes a big issue, so. But that was my only thing, because it's causing me a big issue, it's causing us some problems. You know, like I said, we're both disabled, I just had surgery, I really can't do nothing by Monday.
Well, we appreciate you coming up and...
Did you have a comment, Mr. Harris?
Are you done with me?
You're fine, we, we just want to get to your issue, we just want to help you and, so thank you.
First of all, for clarity, I believe the property is 1017 Indiana. That property has been played for several years with issues of not only just toys, but issues of stuff, cars being abandoned on the property that was asked to be removed. The issue here is about a trailer that is, I've sent pictures to the Alderman, please take a look at it, that's filled with miscellant, all kinds of things. There was a van that was in the front that we learned she moved from the front to the back. So it's almost been like a chess match, trying to figure out where this stuff is going. Then it reoccurs and come right back. There have been multiple complaints in the community there regarding it. We've had several attempts to clean up, working with the particular resident. And it's just abundance, to say a few toys is not, is incorrect, that's an injustice. We're talking about mounting mounds of items, front and back. There are about four or five storage units on that one property alone. And the area you're talking about with the trailer that's not on an unpaved surface, it's in the front of the property, on the front lawn of the property. Take a look at it, our inspectors have tried to work with the resident, to try to have them clean it up. This has not been something that occurred within the last couple of weeks. This has more been a year-long journey of trying to get that addressed. We don't have a particular issue like that in an area to that degree that she's talking about. And yes, my inspectors, my great inspectors, done a great job, a yeoman's job to enforce. We have code violations, multiple code violations. I went out there today, I think there are either five other storage units added, including addition to the property. So we're not talking, literally the whole lot is filled with storage units and toys.
We get the point, Mr. Harris, I got the pictures, I appreciate you, I'm not going to debate this up here.
I'm sorry, I'm just gonna say that I don't have five storage units.
I understand, I understand, I'm not going to debate it up here. But however, we can work together to fix this. It's not a, it's not a huge deal, I'll come help you clean it up myself. It's, I, I understand, so I, I can't let it go back and forth, and I'm so sorry.
But the issue is the van that's in the backyard. Mrs. Jones gave us permission to leave it back there as long as it was on blocks.
I get it, I get it.
So, you know, this is just ridiculous. Can you give me your card to where I can call you?
I will, I'll come out there and talk to you after this. All right, Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Any, any other residents, president signed up to speak?
Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderwoman, this ends off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so glad this is up before it gets to my turn.
I love it, I love it.
Thank you. You know, I think we're seeing an increase of constituent issues that are coming before the council. And we need to make sure our constituents know how to get ahold of us. So, you know, this should have been something that was discussed with, is it your ward or is it your ward? Whoever's ward it is. I mean, you know, these are things that should be, they should be handled offline. Not that they're a secret or anything like that, but that's what we're here to do. We are here to help, you know, these situations, these are community, or these are complaint-driven situations, as we all know. So, you know, I just hope that we can, going forward, I hope we, you know, these kinds of situations, they don't need to be escalated to city council. They don't need to be at the committee of the whole, because they just need service, they need to be taken care of.
Any, Alderman Williams?
Yeah, so, so that it's clear, it's my first time ever hearing about the address, knowing the lady, or, or knowing of the situation. I kind of agree with, with Alderman, Alderwoman is saying. However, sometimes people listen to what they're doing, how long and how far back this goes. Sometime they get to a point where this is their last option. So that's probably why she's here. And we spend a lot of time with businesses and, and talking about businesses. And we don't have a problem with giving them their five minutes. So I think we could be a little patient when a citizen comes. We don't get a whole lot of them, and if it's increasing, like you said, we all just need to let people know, hey, there's a process first before you come here. But a lot of people out there already think that if I'm not satisfied with what the department's doing, I'm coming to tell the mayor. That's just the way people think.
But if the mayor didn't let you know about this call, he, his office talked to, to this woman. And if he didn't pass that along, I mean, there is a system in place, even if it gets to the mayor first.
Or if the mayor didn't know about it, or if they called council coordinator, council coordinator's office, you can call 789, our office, 2200, and we will refer to council coordinator. So any former, or any more complaints, we are going to forward them to council coordinator's office, and they can send it to the appropriate council member.
Final comment, I, I, I'll say that, you know, whenever I'm running committee and we only do it, what, once or twice a year, I, I have a hard time with cutting our, our residents off and holding to that five minutes. I'm trying, to our council, I'm trying to do better at that. It's hard, it's a hard thing to do, so I'm looking for tips from you.
It's not about not allowing people to speak, it's about issues that we should be dealing with, that's our job.
I understand.
Yeah, it's, people, of course, are allowed to speak, that's not what I'm saying at all.
I understand. All right, is there any executive session?
No, sir, there is none.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Alderman for the GJ, I'm sorry, I gotta look, gotta get a look.
Very seldom speak, but, you know.
Doing both, hitting and raising.
Since we're talking about what people should know and not know, is it our purview or our, our responsibility to enforce someone's, what do you call it, covenants in a subdivision? I mean, that has nothing to do with us, that's a private matter. So why do we even entertain that? Some of those things were city code violations.
That's what I'm talking about. If, if they had spoken to their alderperson, they would know that. This is a private organization, we cannot intervene.
Do we have an executive session? Nope. Saying nothing that comes before this committee, I would adjourn the motion for adjournment. Thank you kindly. You know what?
Oh.
Is there any other citizens that would like to speak to this committee?
Anyone that doesn't have a, a Patriots jersey on.
Come on, James, put five minutes on clock for me.
Good evening, y'all know who I am, James Johnson, and out of all people who should have known, I wanted to say so. Ward two alderman, should have known, and he just ignored me. So, I ain't gonna be like Curtis, I ain't worried about getting slapped and nothing happened. He knows how it's gonna end with me. So to the mayor and to the chairperson, good evening. Now, y'all got a lot on y'all plate, a whole lot. And I hate to add some more, but you know I'm gonna have to add some more. We about to get in some good trouble here in the next couple of weeks. Now, y'all know I've been coming here for years, longer than mostly all y'all around this horseshoe. And I've been giving it advice, I've been giving tips, warnings, everything. And you can take it or leave it, you know, you can do whatever you want with it. But remember this now, even a dead clock is right twice a day. And with saying that, I've been paying attention even though y'all haven't seen me. And there's some things that's just, it's gonna come back and bite you. I just say it's gonna come back and bite you. I don't agree with everything, and God love Joe McMenamin, I don't always agree with him either. But there was something that just took place about a month or two ago that I actually agreed with him. And I was like, man, I can't even be at the council meeting and say nothing that. I agree with that man one time. And then to hear what's going on now, Mayor, I'm gonna say it's a bad look on the city because I heard about it too, you know? The unions are even saying, man, we didn't get no minorities. And that's what's coming from the unions, you didn't send even no minorities, that's a bad look. But that ain't what I'm here for. I'm here because I need y'all help. I've been working in the schools mentoring. And this pandemic has hurt us with our kids being sat back. There's just two, now granted, there's some good kids in our school district. And if you see a teacher, principal, and that, man, thank them for what they putting up with in our school systems. We all need to get behind them and support them. And we need to go to our legislators. We need to take the handcuffs off of parents who are parenting and put them on the parents who are not parenting. Our schools need help. Our teachers need our support, our help, our principals need it. And we got to start right here, well, I already said, I'm gonna start right here. I need, I know y'all busy, I know there's a lot on your plate. But if we don't get to some of these kids right now, if you think we got problems in the streets in the past, you ain't gonna like what you gonna see. I've been in there for about three, four weeks now since, and, and I'm even at awe at the disrespect to adults. And I'm all about children and the elderly. I'll fight to them to, for them until I die. So with that being said, I'm working with the chief. I'm bringing them into the schools where I mentor. We had already talked about it. I need you.
I've been there.
And I need you. Our females need some role models, they need to be talked to too. I'm gonna throw this out for free and I'm, and I'm gonna be done. Do you know, or do you realize, our last two major murders, homicides, whatever you want to call them, were by females? Young females. There's something wrong with that.
Lakeisha can be helpful too.
There's something wrong with that. So, what, what we need to do, along with all the other issues we have, let's take time out for our kids and support our teachers and principals. And that's all I have this time.
Alderman Redpath.
But I'll be back. Yes, Mr. Redpath.
I did not have a question.
Alderwoman purchase.
I was just gonna say, Kristen and Erin, I will help you too because I wasn't addressed.
We know you will.
Y'all can do whatever y'all want with Ward five alderman.
Ms. Misty has something to say too.
But the people, I'm not being disrespectful.
I'm not gonna have it, to address the chair, that's why I asked you to address the chair. That's why I dressed, actually addressed me.
I'm not being disrespectful. I know who has been there, that's all I ask for. I haven't even had a chance to even talk to her about it. So I'm not getting into that.
All right, you know I'll be there, whatever you need.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Treasurer.
I just wanted to add that District 186 has Making the Grade Conferences where we can go. I have done it for years at Lanfair and Southeast High School. And you can go one morning a month and mentor the children there, the students who need help academically or with attendance. So just contact District 186.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Congratulations on boys' basketball.
Alderwoman Conley.
I'm on their first, I'll let her go first, goodness.
Y'all moving fast, I thought you already spoke, go ahead, Alderwoman.
James, thank you, you do do an excellent job in schools, I appreciate the work you do. I'm happy to help however I can, so you got, you have my number.
Be in touch.
Good job, James. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, and I was just gonna add, well, it is important to get into the schools, there are also, we have the alternative school program too. And I, I think everyone on the council got an email from one of the teachers at the alternative program. She's actually a constituent of mine, inviting us to go in and, you know, meet the kids and, and show, just, just have a presence at, at that building too. So I would, I would, there are a lot of options for mentoring and for tutoring. I will tell you, before I was on council, I, I spent a couple of years doing GED tutoring outside of the school system. So you're right, being in the schools is important, and if you can't get that in the schedule, there, there are other options too. But my, my husband's a teacher, also a new citizen, yay. But I, I will tell you, th- this has been a tough year, it, it has been a tough year. And I've talked to people, all ages, at all, I mean, this, this isn't just, this isn't our, our kids, it's, it's our adults, it's, it's preschool kids. And, and I just ask, we do need to be reaching out, we do need to be reaching out to everybody right now and, and have a little more patience for errors in the past because we've all made them. But also understand that a lot of people are coming out of this COVID with, with heavy baggage. And, and it's been, it's been difficult for a lot of people. And, you know, we've, we've seen it around this council, we, we see it everywhere. So it's, I'm sorry, now I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm kind of rambling a little bit. It's, we're hoping it's, it's gonna get warm. But yes, we, I'm happy to help, I've, I've, thank you for coming in and for bringing this up, thank you. Leave it at that. I'm sorry, I'm tired today.
All right, any other citizens I gotta ask?
Second.
Motion adjourned. Let's go.